Okay, so before we start the first meeting, I believe Kevin has a motion.
Yeah, it was a point of order that we didn't close the last meeting. I can read the relevant passage from Robert's rules if anybody needs that. As a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to move to adjourn the last meeting and then I might take two motions, but then to accept the agenda for this meeting.
So you want to adjourn the last meeting? What was the second part? I'm sorry.
Accept the agenda for the 16th.
Oh.
I mean, sorry, the 19th.
Open that meeting, so we haven't done that. So I would just take the first part of your motion. That's okay.
Okay, then it's to adjourn the meeting of the 5th.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, Angela already did. Thanks, Bill. Any discussion? All those that approved to close last meeting on May 5th, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now I'm going to call.
Laurie, you just muted yourself.
I don't know how I did that. Sorry. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:18. I need someone to make a motion to review and accept our agenda.
I moved.
Second.
Second.
You're seconding, thank you. Okay, I don't, is there anything that we need to do? And on, okay.
Um.
No, okay.
I, I'd like to make two motions if I could. In regards to the, um, agenda for the facilities.
Okay.
Uh.
Do we get to that part? Or, I mean, is?
Are we there yet, or?
No, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We're just approving the agenda at this point. But once we get to facilities and start talking, I'd be fine with that. Okay, so all those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Or wave at me.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, are we moving the personnel matter to the end that's on the agenda, Jean?
Yes, it also is now kind of old news, so I'll just email an update to the board. If there's time at the end, I can explain it.
Okay. Um, the next piece of the agenda is our board let's talk communication report. I haven't received anything in regards to OVU. Everything that I've received lately is pertaining to the pre-K voucher system for RNESU, which doesn't affect our district. So, but if anybody here would like to talk on a different, um, matter that's with us tonight, other than facilities, now's your chance. Okay. All right, so the next piece of our meeting is the discussion of school facility, uh, school facilities continued. Um, at our last meeting in April, we just had a presentation by the administration and all of the principals were there, um, discussing all of our facilities. That is part of your packet for tonight, so that you have, um, the information at your fingertips if you so desire. Um, so at this point, um, where would you like to start? Anybody got any ideas?
Well, if.
Now.
If I can make, um, two motions if possible.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is I'd like to move that Brandon Rec Director Bill Moore be allowed to address the board and answer questions from the board during our facilities discussion.
Okay, do you have a second for that?
Second.
Thanks, Greg. All right, so let's, um, finish that one first. So, um, all of those that approve having Bill Moore here, hi, Bill, thanks for joining us, um, to speak with us this evening, please signify by saying aye, waving at me. Everyone.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Bill, you have the ability to do that. Thank you. All right, and then your second motion?
The second motion is I'm, I move that the programs at the North Campus be moved to the former Sudbury School and that the North Campus building be sold to the Brandon Rec Department to be developed as a regional recreation facility.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Mike, I got most of the motion, but could you just repeat that?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, do you want me to just email it to you, Caroline, or?
Yeah, that's fine. Unless there's a change to it.
So, Jean, yes?
I, I am hoping that the board will have a lengthy discussion on this. I'd like to tell you the impact of that move. If, um, if North, it, it's, it's not, it is not possible to move the current North Campus programs to Sudbury School, so a positive vote on this motion would close our alternative programs for students and cause us to send those students to programs that can meet their needs at an expense to the district. And we could look at whether or not Sudbury can be used for younger kids' alternative program, which does not currently exist for us. As we explained in last meeting's presentation, Sudbury School is not designed for the older kids, nor is it an appropriate placement that would meet the identified needs in the IEPs of the kids who are currently at North Campus. So I just need you to know that the impact of a positive vote would mean that you are closing the current alternative programs and we will be sending those students to other locations at an expense to the school district instead of the more efficient internal, um, program. So, and, um, yeah.
Um, Greg?
Yeah, Jean, could you clarify the specifics of why?
I'd be happy to. Um, I'd like to do it first, Marsha, and then if you'd like to add anything, I forget, that would be fine. So, the alternative program, uh, programs, there are multiple programs at North Campus. Um, the, the students have specific needs that the facility has been designed to meet. And the Sudbury facility cannot meet the needs of those kids. Um, there are really three classrooms at Sudbury School and a gym, and that's it. And there are multiple programs at North Campus. And the specific, the, the ability to have the different classrooms for the older stu- students, the ability to work with the students in the autism program, um, even the outdoor spaces where we have designed a number of, um, and, and are currently designing a number of programs for students. We're not able to create that at Sudbury. Possibly with a lot of expense to renovate Sudbury and purchase new furniture, but we still would not be able to serve all the same students, and there would be an expense. So if, if, if a student, for example, if the IEP talks about the student needing a, a cooling off space or a timeout space, we don't have that at Sudbury. That student would need to go to another program that provides that type of service for the student. We, Sudbury is not designed, um, to hold alternative programs for students who have a number of behavioral needs, et cetera. So therefore, if we don't have North Campus and if we, if we can't recreate the type of physical environment that North Campus students need, then we would look, because we're bound by an IEP to educate them, we would look at who can provide it, maybe via Vermont Achievement Center in Rutland at an expense, um, possibly could, or, you know, we would look at what other programs might exist. So that would, that then would cause a tuition basis for each one of those students to go elsewhere. Still would not fill Sudbury, which is what I think your intention is to do. Marsha, is there anything I missed in that, or do you want to explain a little bit more about how the physical environment matters in, in an alternative program for these students?
The North Campus now is a program that services children that are on the autism spectrum disorder. It is growing in size based on need, and this summer will have three summer programs. Some students that will go there are also developmentally disabled. The facility has been changed to accommodate the sensory OTPT and needs of these students. Um, these students don't, we don't use punishment, we don't use timeout rooms, we use, uh, a very informed program with them, very individualized. They cannot be in the building at Otter Valley because of their sensory needs. I think that many people remember the old North Campus and are not aware of what currently happens at North Campus. It is a campus that services our most needy students that we have to provide the proper environment for, that benefit greatly from being in our community, from doing community service, providing vocational training for them where they will become adults and hopefully become productive citizens in their own towns, with their own families. And philosophically, that is best practice in special education. If there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jim, I wonder if you could also speak to, um, the impact of closing North Campus? Thank you, Marsha.
Well, I, I think you've identified that it's, it's not something that we could absorb here. It's not the services and the programs those, uh, students are getting, it's not something that could be replicated here. I would be very concerned about them being moved farther away, though. I think there's a, there's a connectivity that, that exists because they are somewhat within our, our satellite, you know, there. And I think philosophically, when you move those most needy students farther away, I think there's a message that's sent that, uh, not only that, but we're sending you to an elementary school. And I, I would have, I have very serious concerns about moving them out of what, over the past few years, has really been designed to meet their needs very well. With some future design work I heard just today, that's going to make an even better location for that group of students.
Thank you, Jim. So again, there are three programs at North Campus, and you would be selling it for a dollar, which is not enough to, um, renovate Sudbury, which would probably likely need extending, as well as, I mean, you'd need to create the same programs and system, which means that we could not accommodate these kids, and we would be closing our alternative programs.
Mary?
Um, already knowing a lot of what Jean and Marsha are talking about, because we didn't discuss it to that detail at the last facility meeting, but we did touch on it. I, I guess I'd like to ask Mike, what, what are the drivers for wanting to make a move like that? And, and what are the perceived benefits you would see in something like that?
Well, I, I think personally, I think we're utilizing Sudbury, which would have a school that's there. It's got a spacious outdoor facility. Um, I don't know what it would take for renovations. I know it talked about that there is, in the last meeting, it was mentioned that the toilets were smaller and so forth, but, I mean, upgrading plumbing wouldn't be that much of an expense, I don't believe. I think, yeah, it's six miles down the road, but when the kids were at, um, Foxcroft Farms, I think it was called, that was just as far, I mean, to get there as it would be to North Campus or to Sudbury. I just think at Sudbury, they would have more benefits to them than they would at North Campus.
What are the benefits, Mike? I'm curious.
If I could just say.
I, I need you to do it one at a time, and Natalie, if you want to say something, can you?
I'm curious. Yeah, Mike, you said that there are benefits. What are the benefits?
I, I think there's more outdoor activity. I mean, I, I don't know the space there. I've never been inside the building. So I really don't know the spacing inside. But, I mean, I just think that I've, I've been to North Campus, and it just doesn't feel like it's a, in my opinion, an environment that's beneficial for learning at some point than it would be at Messbury, or not Messbury, Sudbury. And I wouldn't refer to them as moving to an elementary school. I mean, they'd be moving to another building. I mean, that doesn't need to be called Sudbury Elementary School.
Derek, I see your hand up.
The, the last thing I want to say on this, and, and it's probably appropriate time to say it now, because as we go into the facility conversation, there'll be a lot of different topics we'll, we'll entertain. And the analogy I use, as we talk about these kinds of things that, that works best for framing it up in my mind, I, if I use a sports analogy, and, and we say, two teams are going to make a trade for several players. Well, the best trade, it's always considered to be the one that benefits both teams. Both teams elevate themselves by making that trade. And I think when we look at these facility options and considerations, I would think that we'd be doing due diligence if we looked at each one of these and said, how are we improving or enhancing a particular situation? Now, if we look at North Campus and we move that environment to a different environment, are we making that situation better? And if we're not, then I don't think that, that benefits really hold true. And, and that may not be an option we have in each and every case, but I like to use that in back of my mind as we, as we weigh these things going forward.
Derek?
Yeah, um, I'd like to weigh in as a, as an internal expert on this topic. Um, I'm a former educator. I spent 30 years as a teacher of intensive need students, this North Campus population we're speaking of. And, uh, and I, I agree with Marsha and, and Jean. I've, I have been in the North Campus facility, and I've been in, uh, the Sudbury facility. I've, I've been in all, I've visited all the schools, um, as part of my due diligence before I came on the board. Um, but I, I think it's critically important that you have, um, a good life skills type program available to students in this district. And last, the last time Marsha spoke, I thought she covered a lot of the bases about what was, what was available to the students, what was going on there. Um, and, and I support that, that program stays there. Um, and I support the recommendation, that we have an alternative program at Sudbury for elementary school students, but that's a later conversation, um, tonight. Um, but if, if folks have questions, you know, specifically about some of those things that I, that I might be able to help answer, or I would, um, but I just wanted to go on record as saying that, that it's, uh, it's a good program, it's a viable location, it meets a lot of needs of those students, and it would be problematic, both phil-, it would be problematic both philosophically, um, and, and probably legally initially because of the needs that are outlined in individual education plans would not be able to be addressed, at that site in Sudbury.
Um, can you go into more detail as to what those, those are, I guess, and I'm not asking you, Derek, necessarily, but maybe Jean. You know, that you keep saying that, but you don't go into, and I'm not asking about specific kids, I just want to know what that.
Yeah, sure. I, I can do, I can do a little bit better job. And by the way, I don't know if you knew that Bill's hand had been up for a while. Um, so a, as Marsha was explaining, kids with autism in general have a number of sensory needs, and sensory needs require particular space for those needs. Um, there are sensory rooms, there is sensory equipment, there is opportunity to move, there is, um, there are just a number of sensory needs. Uh, the older, um, students have job placement needs, they also have, uh, they need to be in a more traditional looking classroom, even though it's much smaller numbers. Uh, they may have a, a plan that writes for a timeout space, a space where they can go and they can process with an adult and learn from their behaviors, et cetera. So those are some of the examples of things. Um, Mike mentioned that he has not been at Sudbury, and I imagine that many of you have not. Sudbury is a lovely school built in the 1970s that is three classrooms long, um, without any private spaces whatsoever. In fact, even the fact that the classrooms, I think two of the classrooms actually have private doors, and one is, doesn't even have a door or a complete wall. Um, and it does have a, a small gym, um, not as, not the size of, of North Campus. What it cannot provide to the current students who North Campus serves, um, the intention of the programs that North Campus serves, it cannot provide the sensory motor spaces, it cannot provide the, um, timeout spaces or the behavioral processing spaces. And our adult, not adult, our high school students themselves would fill up the three rooms, which would then have to be renovated to handle larger kids. Um, so you couldn't even get the other two programs in there. But without having the actual ability to provide the services that the plans call for, particularly around sensory services and behavioral services, then we can't use the building, and we would shut down our alternative, our North, our North Campus alternative programs. Um, if we can't use, if we can't provide the services, we can't use the building. There was talk last meeting, a desire on Marsha's part to have an elementary alternative program. Those students, that the building is more designed for, and we, and they don't have the same needs as the existing programs at North Campus. So therefore, we could retrofit the building for an elementary alternative program. And again, when Marsha does that, she does that to meet the needs of kids, to keep them close to their home community, and to serve them in a much more cost-efficient manner. Um, tuition out of district can run $40,000 to $80,000, depending on the student, whereas the cost of one teacher that serves three kids might be $60,000. So it's much more efficient to run our own program and keep them connected to our community. So, I, I, Laurie, I, I think I answered the question. The, the building does not have space to be able to provide the services that are needed by the kids at North Campus. And, um, we would politely disagree that North Campus is not a good learning environment. Um, it, it actually is a great learning environment for these particular students and these particular programs. It's been designed that way over the years. And as Marsha pointed out, the current North Campus programs are very different from the North Campus programs of 15 years ago. They're very, very active. In fact, North Campus ran five days a week all the way throughout the pandemic with it, given the size of the, the numbers of the students, when the rest of our schools could not.
Bill, you had your hand up.
Yes, a couple of things. I'm thinking about least restrictive environment, and I'm wondering how that applies in both cases, both Sudbury and North Campus. And I don't want to get into the situation that we would be putting children into these programs in order to make the programs work. That would be the wrong alternative. And I would also raise the question is, what are, are we really putting the right kids in these programs? If we're separating children now, whether it's to the North Campus or to Sudbury, it's still a long way from home for all of the kids. And I want to make sure that we make the right placement decisions, not something that would maintain a program. So that's the first part I'd like to see addressed. And the second part is, how, how much is the North Campus used for recreational purposes in the town? What is the current availability? How much is it being used? Can we work this so that we could keep the facility for Rutland Northeast, but at the same time, open it up more for the Rec Department and community activity?
So those are really good questions, Bill. So you, you've known Marsha a long time, you hired her.
Yeah.
And, um, so I, I don't think you'll be at all surprised when I say that Marsha is probably pretty darned close to the best special ed director in the entire state. And has, if you look at the RNESU budget over the last several years, um, on a regular basis, she continually looks for cost efficiencies that are good for kids and good for the district. And North Campus is one of those. Um, she is, uh, she describes herself as an upholder, but in so doing, she, she, um, absolutely makes sure that kids are placed where they need to be placed. So we designed a program for the needs of our kids, not to design a program. And Marsha has proven over my seven years here that when a program is no longer needed, she changes it or closes it. So, uh, a, a good example of that is the autism program in the Blue House at Lothrup. The Blue House was purchased to run an autism program. We no longer needed an autism program there. And so while we still own the house, the program was closed because Marsha recognized that we no longer, so she does not, her team, um, under her direction, do not funnel kids into a program where they don't belong. And in fact, work very hard to get kids out of programs if it's at all possible, which is much more possible to do if that program is being run by us than if it's being run by another vendor. So that's the first part of your question. We are, the second part of the question is, yes, we already do have Brandon Rec using the gym at, um, North Campus and are happy to continue that indefinitely. We try to partner when we can. Um, during the school day, we use the gym. After the school day, we have opened it up, um, for Brandon Rec, so that continues.
Um, Becky?
I just wanted to mimic what Derek said. I've been in both places, and, um, I, I agree that we should keep the high school students where they're at, and it would be fun to entertain a place, um, for elementary students to go to. Um, but the way the building in Sudbury is set up, it, it, I don't see that being conducive for bigger bodies and having it work the way we would want it to work.
Um, Mike, I see your hand up, but I wanted to make sure that there was, that there was another board member who wanted to speak before you, to give everyone a chance, if you're okay with that.
I do, but I can't figure out how to raise my hand on my phone.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Angela.
Um, so a couple of things. Um, I think, I think we should look at, uh, the cost of, of what the North Campus building is, is costing us to run, for one, and then how much it would cost to actually renovate Sudbury to, to get what they, what, um, they need to move North Campus. Not that I'm saying it, it's something that, like, I'm for or against, I just, I want to see all the, I want to see all the information before I can make a, a, a decision. And also, if we do keep North Campus, we need to really seriously think about putting a lot more money into that campus. Because the gym is falling apart. It's really disgusting and is, is just depressing when you walk in there, you don't have one basketball hoop that even works, uh, or even exists, I don't think. I think they're all, I think they're all broken, they're torn down already. Uh, but over the years of using that at North Campus for some Brandon Rec events, not very much, it's, it's, uh, it's just not, it's not an acceptable place to have a nice program there. It's something that, where the community could really use it and, and be proud that it's there. Um, I know Bill was going to speak to, or I believe he was going to speak to, that if he was to be able to take over the building, that he could hopefully get grants and stuff to, to renovate it and make it a really nice, nice area. Um, I, I just want, that's all I guess I wanted to say, is just that if we, if we did keep North Campus and we keep the kids there, and I just want the board to think about, we need to put some money into it somehow and get it more presentable, a nicer space.
Marsha, go ahead.
I would really like to make a couple of points if I could, because they haven't been made. Um, students can't be moved to Sudbury. Students are placed. A team makes a placement decision, and under the law, certain obligations the LEA has to meet. Each of those students would have a meeting, and their teams would have to look at what we would purchase if they don't go to North Campus. You cannot place them at Sudbury. A board does not have the legal authority to do that. Only the IEP team does. And if the IEP team wants those goals and objectives met, I think the board needs to understand one of Jean's points. Each of those children will cost you at least $55,000 a year to leave this district. You need to think about your staffing ratios at North Campus and what you would pay for if they leave. And for me, it's a difficult conversation at best, because philosophically, children on the spectrum have sensory needs, and we deserve to meet them in their communities and not send them to way to other towns or residential facilities where they are taken away from their families because they are on the spectrum and can't speak for themselves. So I'm very passionate about that, and I think the board should hear that from their director. Um, the second thing is, is that North Campus Special Ed has renovated the building severely, and there's a kitchen there that far exceeds the one at Sudbury. The students. The students are very happy there. And like Jean said, they have individual spaces and the program is growing based on the needs in the district. And this summer will house elementary students as well. Because their OT and related services needs can be met. And so these are about expenses as well. So if you're not compelled to talk about philosophy and best practice, please consider your finances and your taxpayers, because this decision will have a severe financial impact on the budget. And I will not be able to balance my budget.
Hello, Bill Moore. Can you ever hear me?
Yeah.
So I, I am not on the school board. I am the Brandon Rec Director. And if you guys are in the business of giving out buildings, I would certainly, on behalf of the town, gladly accept a building. We certainly need recreational opportunities for all the townspeople. And again, like I said, not arguing your pedagogy or anything like that around your philosophies around special ed, simply recreational needs. You know, the North Campus Gymnasium sits in the middle of a, I guess, a node or another part of the town called Park Village that houses low to moderate income individuals as well as seniors. The gym could be used to enhance their experiences in the community. We could also potentially house a food shelf. I can guarantee you that if you guys were to see fit to hand it over to the rec, we would enter into a, an option agreement, having a environmental study done and then pursue community development grants and other grants to renovate the building to make it acceptable for for folks in the community to use it. And again, like I said, you know, it's tough, especially after Marcia's impassioned speech, you know, I'm not arguing against kids. I'm simply arguing that if you're giving a building away, the town of Brandon would gladly take it and make sure that it was used in that all community members, not just members of Brandon, but Leicester, Sudbury, Goshen, people in Pittsburgh, we provide recreational programming for everybody. All OVU, USD, School District sending towns. Let's see, what else? Oh, yeah, the, yeah, again, so you want to give me the building, I gladly take it. It definitely won't go to, uh, it definitely won't go to seed. It will be renovated, be upkept, used, you know, during school hours and after school hours. And by the by, the, I've had a wonderful relationship with the RNESU and OVUSD for my nine years as a rec director. We've partnered on many things. I act basically, I'm sort of a, you know, a cost sharing for you guys in that you don't have to pay for an athletic director at the elementary schools. The rec department served that need. And you guys recognize that by allowing us access to the gym and Judy has been a wonderful partner in the gym and as well as Stephen Keith has been a wonderful partner, let us use the gym whenever he can. But we are also, I, I know that we were very close a few years ago when you guys voted on trying to get another gym, because it's clear that, you know, we don't have the gym space or recreational space to serve the needs of the entire OVUSD. Forget about even Brandon. So this, again, could be a possibility as well as, you know, getting you an interim gym until you can get the, you know, four or five million dollars to build the gym. You guys would need to service the needs of all your, uh, all your communities. And again, I'm here to answer any questions you guys had about what we might do over there.
Thanks, Bill. Who have I not heard from as a board member who might want to speak? I haven't heard from Kevin. I haven't heard from Barbara. And Greg, have I heard from you? I don't think so. Any of the three of you want to say anything, then I'll go back and talk to other board members.
I, I appreciate all the information and expertise brought before the board tonight. And
No, Brenda or Barbara, you're cutting out. Something happened. Try again. Nope, still not working. Barbara, you're muted or something.
No, it's my bad internet connection. That's another reason I'm not saying much. I didn't say anything worth note.
Okay. Kevin or Greg?
I'm in from a place of still mourning Foxcraft Farm. I think we had a wonderful program there six or seven years ago, whenever it was, it was a kill. And I thought that was a terrible decision and, and I'm, I'm concerned that the current North Campus facility, we haven't talked about, about the program for non-autistic high school students. I don't know anymore what it's called, but I'm not sure we're serving them adequately. It is a dismal building. It's nineteen forty-five. It reminds me of the school I went to first grade in in the nineteen sixties. Doesn't have outdoor facilities. We, we are not giving these kids the option that Foxcraft Farm did so wonderfully of, of giving them productive work and, and a feeling of accomplishment, a feeling of contributing. I don't think, I don't think that's happening from, from inside here. We don't have, we don't have any adequate outdoor facility for outdoor education and Otter Valley does that wonderfully. Josh Hart's program is tremendous. So I think we need to think about, very seriously about ways in which we can expand those opportunities for these kids in a way that doesn't make them feel exiled. When we talk about least restrictive environment, least restrictive environment is, is a school they, they are, are, are assigned to. So for all of these reasons, I'm very concerned and, and we have to change, have to change something. And I'll leave it at that for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Greg?
Yeah, I just got home. That was perfect timing. My phone is at one percent. I was worried it's gonna leave there. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specifics of the program there. So I'm, I, I'm more you know, I, I come at it from more of an aesthetic building perspective. You know, we did all these great improvements to the Otter Valley Campus and, you know, walking in that front entrance. I'm sure kids are filled with such, filled with such pride, like feeling like their community cares about them by, by way of the buildings that we, we create and the spaces we create from, for them. You know, I don't know what OV North Campus was like twenty years ago. I do, I did get a tour five years ago. And, um, you know, I, I do feel like it's lacking in certain qualities. Obviously, there's, it's meeting all the legal requirements. But I would hate that our education is just focused on making sure we're meeting the legal requirements. I, I feel like we need to make sure we're creating spaces where kids feel cared about. And not just from a legal standpoint, but feeling like a sense of pride in the building that they're being given. And just thinking about equity, you know, the equity of having kids in different buildings, we need to kind of keep that same focus. So we've invested in Otter Valley Campus. And so I just want to make sure if they do stay at North Campus that we make improvements. But I see more potential at Sudbury and, you know, from being a, a business owner myself, like, you know, I will sometimes have to make decisions. You know, I think I need to start making more product. I'll build this facility and it's going to have to meet certain requirements for the FDA. You know, there's all sorts of obstacles, but I have to look at the bigger vision. And I just think as we as a board make these decisions, I know that our staff is going to let us know all the legal requirements. But I think we as a board need to think of the bigger vision. And if we decide we want them at Sudbury or somewhere else, you know, that's our decision. And then you guys, the staff would let us know specifics to just so we do our due diligence, what those costs actually are. Cause I mean, obviously, everybody's going to be impassioned about, you know, keeping the status quo. But I just want to do our due diligence and know what those specifics are, what those costs are.
Sorry, I was muted. Jim, go ahead.
I was just going to reiterate what I think Marcia said very clearly, that you, we will not just move students to Sudbury. That those, those services are designed through the IEP process. And we're not just gonna, it's, it's not like when we moved Muslumoo from there to the school. This is different. And so you need to understand that. It's not, we're just going to move them there. It's not going to happen that way. I've also kind of wonder, I, I'm, I'm hearing this, the building, which I remember when Bill Matheson, we bought it with Rodney Morris many, many years ago. I think there's been a lot of work done to that building to improve it. And I think Marcia Bruce brought a great deal of money into that program to bring it into a place in which kids can feel good about being there in the building. I don't know how many of you have been in it in the last year. I don't know how many of you've seen what the programs these children are, you know, our students are experiencing there. I do love the idea of, you know, let's, let's bring them a great program, a great facility. I'm, I'm, I'm all for that. But I, I don't think you're going to get it by moving and I'm thinking that you're just going to say, we're going to develop this other building and maybe some kids will go there. So I, I don't think so. I, I, I'm also concerned about, we, some of these children are in workplace learning environments. They are involved, Kevin, in, you know, pre-COVID, they were involved in those kinds of experiences. And in Sudbury, they're gonna, they're gonna be on the road a long time, a long time to be able to come back into their towns. So I'll stop there.
And I just want to clarify, these students would never attend Harvest Program. This is not that population. The population at North Campus is not what it was. There are lingering students who we could not say go away, who will be graduating in the next year and a half. There are several of them. This building does not house students with emotional disabilities. That's not what it is. You're remembering an old program. This is a premier program for children on the spectrum.
All right. So Mike, I'm gonna go back to you.
Thanks. So when, when North Campus was first started and they're being utilized, I aren't we at the same stage? Was there not a transition plan to meet the legal obligations? Wouldn't that be the same type that we're doing now? We're adapting the legal laws, so to speak, by transitioning to Sudbury?
Again, you can't transition to Sudbury. It's when North Campus first began, first of all, it began with a totally different student population than it has now, a totally different type of program. And the students who are there now do not have programs that can transition to Sudbury. Therefore, if you choose to sell North Campus, you need to know that you are closing our alternative programs for the students that are there. And I would also add that it's not something you should therefore do in one meeting without any notice to those families whatsoever.
Okay, Natalie.
I have a lot of thoughts about this, but my first thought is that I would make any decision. My battery's running low, so I'll say this quick, without a very thorough cost benefit analysis. I would want to know what happens to the kids, where we would send them. I also love the idea of having a rec center. I have four kids. I would love that. But when I think about my oldest child who's on the spectrum, who has sensory processing disorder, and then my three other kids, I would rather my oldest child have the services and the space that he needs rather than the other three be able to play basketball or something else. I feel like the service to these kids at North Campus is something that we need desperately. And I would never want to get rid of that. And I, I wouldn't want to ship my child away either. I think having it close to town is really important, having them be able to do the work, life stuff. I think that's, that's all I want to say. I just, I, I couldn't support, I couldn't support this right now without, with the information that I've been given.
Hey. I'm gonna listen to Debbie first and then we'll go to Brenda Fleming.
Thank you, Lori. I just want to sort of remind everyone of, or just help us or ask us to continue to think about the fact that one of the proposals for Sudbury or a strong proposal is the space for our elementary students. And making the move to move North Campus to Sudbury would, would not even, there wouldn't be any plan created at that point for elementary students. And we are growing in numbers as far as students who have needs at much earlier ages. And Marcia spoke, I believe, at the last meeting about we are just seeing a, a much greater increase of students with traumatic backgrounds who need very different care than what we can provide in classrooms. And so I just want to sort of put that out there, that that is just another little piece of the puzzle that we desperately need in our district. So, thank you, Lori.
Brenda?
Thank you. I want to reiterate what, what Jean said, and I think you all know. Marcia is a strong and a very skilled special education director. And the fact that you may be thinking of old, of OV North with older programs is part of her skill. And what Marcia continually does, and I've had the pleasure of working with her for years, is she adapts our students' needs and programs and knows the facilities that can help them. And so Otter Valley North is an asset for our district. Because as you already know, it has served multiple purposes over the years. I agree with everything people have said, that it needs some tender loving care and some improvements. But I do not see it as a detriment to the facility grouping of the whole organization. We need space. And one of the things that I have known since I've started here and have been here for more than twenty-five years is that we use space differently over the course of the long run like this. And while Sudbury was a beautiful and is a wonderful learning space for elementary students, it's not used in the same fashion anymore. Education is delivered differently. It's very fluidly changing. Especially for special needs kids. And Marcia is an expert at finding and making programs that work for our students. And when she can't find it and she doesn't have this space, then she finds the most appropriate placement for them. So I, I have to tell you, I'd be very disappointed to see Otter Valley North gone. I think it is an asset. It has been used multiple times for various different programs from what we used to call the Judy Ward and the Rodney King Program, no, sorry, Rodney Morris Program, to Muslumoo, to what OV North is now. In the twenty-five years that we've owned it, or the twenty years that we've owned it, there have been at least ten different types of programs in it. So it is a very fluidly used space.
Thanks, Brenda. Jean?
Thank you. It's really fascinating hearing the different things. And I'm hearing an awful lot of inaccurate information being put out and actually being put out by some people who haven't actually been in the building. It is not true that there are no outdoor facilities at North Campus. There are a number of outdoor facilities and in fact, a number of outdoor improvements underway right now by the students themselves. It is, Marcia already addressed this. It is not the same, same student population that accessed that Foxcraft, I figured the name now, the farm. It's not the same population of students. That's not who we're talking about. Approvements have been made in the building. And we have a new facilities coordinator for Otter Valley Union High School, Richard Bigu, which is on the call, who is listening carefully to what you're saying about the gym is dirty and the, and the basketball hoops need to be repaired. I don't know if that's true or not, but I do know that Rich is listening to you. So I would imagine that if that's true, that won't be true very long. It's and again, I, I think Brett, I think Debbie made a good point about, well, basically, I, I just have to, I just have to repeat myself again. If we sell North Campus, we will not serve the students currently at North Campus at Sudbury. We still may try to make the elementary program, but these students will go out of district. And I just need to have it on the record, if you do this, that but these students will go out of district and I just need to have it on the record, if you do this, that it is against the administration's recommendation because when the budget goes up, when the costs increase, when we have students we cannot serve, and when you have some parents coming to the board upset about that, I, I need to have that on the record. That's, that's my job. That's what you hire me to do.
Thanks. Barbara?
Hi, I'm going to turn off my video because we'll see if it keeps me more stable this way. I, I just want to, I just want to repeat a lot of what has been recently said about, um, listening to the people in the administration who are the experts and who do this for a living, making sure that we don't, um, confuse different populations of students that we serve and the facilities that are, that are at North Campus. One of the things I'm mindful of that more recent board members didn't have the opportunity to do because of COVID is that we used to have board meetings and rotate the locations where we met. So those of us who've been on the board for a couple of years or more have been to all of the facilities, um, including North Campus. And so it's been a few years since I've been there, but I don't remember it as being a, a dismal, depressing space by any stretch. And, um, and from what I'm hearing, there have been changes made in the time since I last visited or since the, the board meeting was held there. So, um,
Did we lose you? Okay.
We're making this decision is, her expertise is in this area. We must remember this and, uh, take that into account. And, um, as is Marcia's and, you know, these are the experts and they have done this a long time and we would be, I think, ill-advised not to be listening to them really carefully. We're a school board, but we are not in, experts in special education and meeting the needs of that student population. And we rely on the people who are experts to guide us in our decision-making. So much as it sounds great, you know, some of the aspects of this plan, uh, it's, we can't just be the dreamers. We have to actually think about the reality and the reality is we can't move, uh, the students from OV North to Sudbury, no matter how great it sounds. And, um, and for, sorry to go on, but, um, the other thing is of course, the consideration comes down to as well, the families being served, if they then have to leave the district, this has been made a few times, but how would those families feel about the board making this decision? I think they would feel terribly, betrayed, I suppose, by the board if we just decided to essentially wash our hands of them. Um, that would be a horrible disservice.
Thanks, Barbara. Angela?
So I just, I just wanted to, uh, state that, you know, we, I, I don't think there's anybody on this board that does not respect our administration and, and their views and, and them telling us, you know, what, what this district really needs. I think we as a board are just trying to see the whole picture as best we can to make, um, the decision that, um, is best. With that said, uh, I had a question for Jean and, um, what, what exactly, so you say that North Campus can't move to Sudbury, but we're saying that the elementary can. So if the elementary moves there, isn't that the same issue though? Is, are you moving?
It's a very
Are you moving people from Pittsburgh all the way to Sudbury, which seems like a really long trip?
Right. So it is if they're coming from Pittsburgh. That's right. So what I was trying to disguise, describe is that uh, the, the basic piece that I was trying to describe is that the facility cannot meet the needs of the current students that North Campus has programs for. The facility could meet the needs of a very few, uh, elementary age students who are much younger, much smaller group of students, and we would be able to carve out some space for them. North Campus, however, has larger students, more numbers, and more significant needs come with age. So the existing students could not move over, Sudbury Facility could not meet the needs of the exist, the, the, the sensory motor and other needs of existing students. But we can design it for the much smaller, younger students. Does that make sense? The, the part that you're talking about where they come from, yes, you're correct. It would be a long ride from, you know, relatively speaking, from Lothrup to Sudbury. However, elementary students do not also have job placements. They do not also, um, access the community in the same way that the high school students would at, at currently at North Campus. And Sudbury for those elementary students is a much load, closer location than the added district placements that we would need to find for them if we cannot serve them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it clears things up. Thank you.
Barry and then Bill. You're still muted, Barry.
Thank you. Um, I don't know where we are in the discussion and how close we are to, um, coming to the end of it. But just listening to all the conversation, I kind of started with wanting to know what are the perceived benefits and as I listened to all of the conversation, I don't know if I've really heard any. And, um, other than, you know, taking advantage of a facility that's available, but I don't really perceive that to be a huge benefit. And Greg kind of spoke to maybe the potential that lies with that. Again, I don't really know that that's a benefit. And the critical to quality of my decision was, are we going to make any of those situations better by this decision or by this move? And clearly, I can't see where we're doing that. I just can't. To echo a lot of what, what, um, what Barb said and a little bit of what Natalie said, there's a lot of right here that can go wrong as, as if we were to go down this road. And, and I do appreciate, um, you know, the, the advice that we're getting and the caution that we're getting around the risk involved. So as I said, I don't know where we're going with the discussion or what point we're coming to, but that's kind of what I've been gathering from all of the conversations tonight. So that, I'll end it there.
Okay, Bill?
I'm listening to Natalie's remarks and I think they were really right on. They said, we really need to look at the cost figures very carefully. Uh, part of that is in the documentation here, but it doesn't break it out as closely as I would like, but this means that the data is there somewhere, I hope, and I'd ask Brenda to address that. And how much renovation is going to be involved? If we sell it to the rec department for a dollar or what have you, how much money will they incur in getting it up to speed? Versus what we would, but it would represent money for them. And living off of grants is a very difficult thing to do. It can work for a while, but then it runs up against the wall and that would take away a facility. So I think we ought to look at that as well. Any case, look back at the numbers very carefully.
Okay, anyone else? So at this point, um, are you ready to vote on this or Kevin, you just put your hand up? Yes, sir.
A little slow there. Uh, Lori, you're Sudbury representative. I know you're in, you're also the chair, but I was wondering if you had any perspective from Sudbury on it? On the question before, before we move to vote?
Sure. So, um, I can tell you that, um, being from Sudbury and living right across the road from the school and seeing it empty every day really sucks. I can also tell you that this residents of Sudbury continually ask me what our plan is for it. I don't think any of us wanted to see it idle. Um, it is a cute little school. Um, it does need a, some renovation as far as, um, or maintenance, I guess I would say more than renovation. But I think from my perspective, uh, and the needs of the district, I, I'll be honest here, I feel like, um, if we were to end up getting rid of a building because we don't need it, I think residents of our district would be more apt to give up a building that they don't necessarily have as many ties to than to an actual school that was used in their community. So that was one of my reasons for liking the idea of, um, North Campus moving to Sudbury. It's, I know everyone says it's so far out there, but it's, it's only six miles from the center of town of Brandon and it, the road no longer floods since they raised the road. And it's nice and quiet, which for those kids that need sensory and other needs, you know, that's good for them.